Again, good morning. Welcome to the October 11th Placer County Planning Commission Meeting. Would you please stand and join me in a salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sue, roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Haughey.
Here.
Mr. Herzog.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
And Mr. Seveson is absent today.
Okay. Planning Director EJ, welcome back after last meeting. The one last thing I'd like to say, just because we're still getting, no, before we get going, I just wanted to say that in case I haven't mentioned it, the other commissioners, you're probably noticing that the mics are very sensitive. So if you are shuffling papers or doing anything around these mics, they're going to pick them up, contrary to the last meeting in which they were not picking up much of anything. So just an alert.
We're getting there. We're working the kinks out slowly but surely. Anyway, thank you, EJ Baudy with Planning Services Division. I want to welcome back Commissioners Herzog and Haughey. They were representing the county at the state conference, APA conference down in San Diego this past weekend. We also had Alex Fish and Jen Bias, a couple of our planners down there as well. So anyway, and I heard it was a real good meeting and maybe we'll have some follow-up a little later on. I also want to thank George Rozosko for sitting in last meeting on his 27th during my absence. The one item that was on that agenda, Placer Vineyards Specific Plan Property 15 Small Lot Map, the decision, your vote stands on that project. There's no appeal filed, so that project is approved. Let's see, Tuesday, our board meeting, or at the board meeting, a couple items you might be interested in. There was a presentation and pretty lengthy discussion on the Western Placer County Affordable Workhouse Housing Fee. The board did not take any action. There were only four members there. They wanted all five board members to be there. But what they did do, they did give direction to staff to move forward with setting up some stakeholder meetings and then also bring back some additional information at the November 6th meeting, I believe. So they're going to probably go through a similar conversation or discussion on November 6th as well with all five board members there. And then, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, and then we do have a Tahoe Board Meeting on October 23rd, and at that meeting, they'll entertain the discussion on the Eastern Placer County Workforce Housing Fee. Also at the board on Tuesday, they approved the 2018 Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan. This was a coordinated effort between Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and also the County Department of Public Works Transportation Division. This is an update to the 2002 Plan, and it identifies bike way improvements proposed in unincorporated county and integrates the planning efforts of the six incorporated cities to create a regional bike way system. So with this approval, planning staff will be bringing forward to your commission a number of amendments to several community plans to incorporate the changes that are in there, and we're going to be bringing that to you at your next meeting on October 25th. That will be at the Planning Commission. So we probably need to talk about Planning Commission dates as we get towards the end of the year. Also, on October 25th, we're going to be bringing back the tiny house zoning text amendment. As you remember, we had several comment letters. We had continued that from a previous meeting, just so we can take a look at them, address them. Based on those letters, we have made a couple fairly, probably one significant change. We were looking at applying that to where you can have a tiny house as both a primary dwelling and also a secondary dwelling. What we're going to be bringing before you at the next meeting is just having tiny houses permitted as a secondary dwelling. There are also some questions about fees and how they would be applied, so we've revised language in the zoning text to reflect that. That language that's been revised is up online right now. So if anybody's interested, you can see what will be coming to the commission on the 25th.
Will that be an action item?
That will be, we'll be asking for a recommendation from your commission to move forward to the Board of Supervisors. Everybody who's been involved in that discussion, we have quite a large distribution list, so we've notified everybody of the availability of that new revised language and of the upcoming Planning Commission hearing. And then also, on October 25th, we have the continued extension of time for Kemper Woods that we hope to bring to a close at that meeting as well. We had one regularly scheduled meeting in November. That's November 8th. That's still on. There may be a couple items on there, but a fairly light agenda. And then we get into December. So our regularly scheduled meeting is December 13th. Based on the number of projects that are coming in, we've realized that we're going to need both a meeting in Tahoe and a meeting in Auburn for respective projects in each area. Going back between commissioners, especially those that are at large and representing Tahoe, we have a couple commissioners that may not be available on certain dates if we do a special meeting. We talked about a December 6th Planning Commission Meeting. These are on Thursdays, and then also a December 20th. December 13th, I believe, Commissioner Haughey is not available for a meeting on that day. I think Mr. Seveson is not available on the 6th, so we kind of got to juggle when, we got to kind of regroup and figure out when we want to have a special meeting in Tahoe in December. And yeah, definitely we need two meetings, though, and we don't need to figure that out today, and maybe I'll work offline on everybody's availability, but just be thinking about December dates. We'll definitely have one on December 13th, and right now that's probably going to be Auburn. So we got to find a good time to go up to Tahoe.
Preferably when it's not snowy.
Yeah, it's December, so at this point, yeah, we'll have to see how that works out.
Look at the almanac and see what it says.
Anyway, so just, I guess a heads up, maybe I'll work with you in the next couple weeks, and then by the next meeting, we can firm up the dates on everybody's availability. One thing is, I know the Board Supervisors was originally going to have a meeting on December 11th, which is a Tuesday. They're no longer going to have a meeting because they've split up where they're having a couple other meetings that month. So December 11th is also an option, but that's, that'd be like having two Planning Commission Meetings in the same week. So I'm throwing this stuff out there. You know, I'll work with you guys individually. I'll get your individual calendars, but it'd be great being the, you know, the number of projects that are on both those agendas that we, you know, we have as many of you there as we can, and hopefully everybody. So one of the big projects that's been out there for some time is the Alpine Sierra Subdivision. That's an EIR project, and that is, you know, that can be probably ready to go anytime in December. The final EIR, you know, would probably be released in November sometime. And there's also Red Dog Lift Replacement, which is a chairlift that we're also trying to get on there. And so anything else in Tahoe that gets ready, we'll try to put it on that same agenda. Then for West Placer, December 13th, the UAIC Tribal School, which you had the draft EIR hearing last time, we think we may have a final EIR out for that to occur at that meeting as well. Placer County Conservation Plan, EIR, we have to do a draft EIR hearing. That's an EIR, EIS. That's something else that could be on there. Placer Retirement Residences, this is a Granite Bay project. That's an EIR. We have to do a draft EIR hearing on that as well. Possibly. So, you know, as we get, you know, we're still in October, and, you know, the timing of getting these documents reviewed by staff and getting to the point where they're ready to be released for public review, I mean, it's always, you know, we're always jumping around trying to figure out what's going to be ready at what time. And then there's a number of other EIRs that are lingering out there where we're going to have to have draft EIR hearings, and this is going to lead into next year as well. So just some strategic planning on how we're going to manage all this, but I think right now the focus is, let's see what we can get done in December in those two meetings, and then we'll, like I said, I'll coordinate with everybody on schedules, and then we'll get it more firmed up maybe at the end of the month.
Any questions for EJ?
After that?
Right, yes.
Right?
Just get ready.
Anyway, so that's all I have to share.
Okay, thank you, EJ.
Thank you.
And before we go to public comment, maybe EJ referenced that Anders and Nathan were at Planning, statewide Planning Meeting in San Diego. Maybe they could share just a little briefly on that?
Sure.
Good, thank you.
You know, it was a conference, there were 2,000 persons in attendance, so I did see Nathan once in a while, but honestly, there were so many people there, it is hard to keep track of him. A couple of things. One, Sunday was an all-day session on Planning Commissions. The interesting thing that came out of that was a number of commissions in the state are experiencing disruptions during their meetings, and one of the newest one is while somebody's speaking at the podium, everyone in the audience is back there doing jazz hands to disrupt the Planning Commission from really focusing. So there is a number of discussions about making sure that this was a place where you can have open dialogue. I thought one of the other interesting things was they said, remember, when you're in the Planning Commission mode, generally you're not in there for discussion. You're there as a judge. You're hearing, and therefore you need to hear all points of view. There was a session on how to chair Commission Meetings, and Wayne, you do a good job. You're doing all the things they said to do. So I thought that was positive. Second thing was a discussion on legislation, state legislation, found it interesting on the housing element. The state is now basically moving into kind of a local world, demanding certain things occur to the point where it's almost they want communities to build housing, which is kind of a difference from what we've seen before. A number of comments were Jerry Brown would not sign any legislation that would limit local control, and the discussion was that legislature is willing to limit local control, and they think with a new governor, that probably will happen. So that's one of the things that we saw in housing. So the new housing guidelines are something else, and I'm sure we'll be seeing that with housing element updates, but that was interesting. The other interesting thing was discussion on specific plans and how they need to be flexible in order to respond to changing conditions. And the changing, one of the changing conditions they brought up was many specific plans were adopted in the 90s and 2000. They said in 2004, the iPhone came out, and since that time, we have Amazon Online, we have, you know, a number of things like Uber, Lyft, that are creating new planning challenges for us, deliveries that are occurring more often during the day, both in towns where you have to have parking reserve or in suburbs where you have more trucks on the road dealing with that. And so they talked about how to deal, ways possibly to make your specific plans more flexible to those changing conditions occurring that are rapidly changing for all of us. Those are just briefly some of the things I heard. Nathan and I are going jointly, put together a set of notes and submit them to Wayne and to EJ, and probably from there, they'll be distributed.
I have a little I'd like to add. I agree with Mr. Haughey about a lot of what he mentioned, and I think there were a lot of exhibitors, and I spent some time in there getting to know the folks and some of the new technologies and what exists, and I have a lot of handouts for these folks and staff and like to pass those on. I was intrigued just in some of the personal discussions with planners and getting to know the good work that they do and understanding their expectations from a commissioner. And so I had a lot of good conversations about what's helpful to know ahead of time, and so I learned a lot about what I should be doing as a commissioner, just having conversations with people. A lot of law updates. There's a long list of laws that I took some notes on and tried to, you know, keep up with the details of that. I went to a game show on Sequo. They had a game show where they had an online text that you're answering, and I did okay. I think I did okay. You know, that was interesting. There were 13 questions, and I missed four. But, you know, some of the planners didn't do that well.
Your new commission, that was good.
Yeah, no, I felt pretty good about that. And I got to know, they have a fellows program through AIC, is that what it is? AICP, and I went to a session on their application, and it is very extensive. I don't know how many, if we have any, I don't think we have any fellows, right?
Yeah, so we do have a couple fellows through, and I'm not going to name the right organization, but the two fellows we have, we have one working with our housing group and another one, I think, working in long-range planning, something new in the last couple years that we started, but they're pretty incredible programs.
When I got tenure at the university that I'm at, it seemed similar to that process, which is extremely extensive. You look at your entire career and
What does AICP stand?
AICP.
Is American Institute of Certified Planners.
And then there's the fellows of American Institute of Certified Planners, and to get into that group, it's a short list, but it's online, and to become a fellow.
I think you have to be in the profession 25 or more years and then done a number of activities in order to get there. So that's not easy.
So I learned quite a bit. I think it's important for us to be aware of the changes each year that happen through that organization, and I did a walking tour of a couple businesses and learned different perspectives of, you know, they do the same thing, but they have very different future growth aspirations and how they approach that. So I think it's important.
Did you sample while you were on the walking tour?
I did.
It was brewery, so.
Yeah. And so that, you know, one organization really wanted to look internationally, and then another organization wanted to stay very local. And so they had a very, and one was downtown, another one was in the business park, and in a warehouse business park. And so their clientele was very different, and so it's just, we have to get to know the applicant and really what their plans are to make a decision so they can grow. So I learned a lot. Would be open to attending again in the future, and I'd encourage anyone that hasn't.
Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate the input from both of you and your willingness to sit down and kind of highlight those things in a document so that we can kind of leverage what you've learned for us, because it is a very changing world.
One thing, all of the sessions were videotaped and recorded, and they're available online. So I think probably through EJ and the staff, if there's, so, you know, here's a program, and if there's anything that you're interested in observing, those are available.
Great, thank you. I guess the most troubling thing that you passed along was the political aspects and the implications maybe coming down. Anytime we get less control locally to the uniqueness of our communities, I find that troubling, because I think the local agencies have a better feel for making right decisions for their communities than those in Sacramento.
And that came up, a number of persons actually asked questions, because seemed to be focused on urban areas and the state solving problems at an urban level, and they kept saying, hold it, you know, what about the rural community, the small towns that just don't have these resources, don't have the same issues? And I don't know, I kind of heard that the legislators still kind of like the big guys and want a one-size-fits-all. So there's a number of times they said, we need to have rules, regulations, that one-size does not fit all, but does recognize the uniqueness of each community.
Yeah, well, I hope that's what comes out, but I'm not optimistic.
And there were quite a few sessions on cannabis, and
Oh, yeah.
I did attend one out of curiosity and, you know, to hear maybe what people were doing. San Francisco and LA both have processes around those that they mentioned as a way that they're going about addressing that legalization of it. And it was interesting to hear, you know, how they're approaching that, but there were quite a few political-oriented sessions that, you know, were interesting to hear about.
Thank you again for sharing. I appreciate that. And thank you, everybody, for being patient as we went through that. Obviously, it's really helpful for us as commissioners to make sure that we're being attuned to what's happening out in the greater world out there so that we can address the issues that come before us in, I think, a more open and thoughtful way. So we will move on to public comment, which I would ask that if these are items that are not on our agenda, if you would like to bring this up, and that you hold it to three minutes, we obviously cannot make any decisions or comments on what you might say, but you're certainly welcome to make a comment if you would like. I'm not seeing anybody jump forward. Mr. Garabedian.
Morning.
Now, let's see, do you, do you have, okay.
Now it's green.
Now they got you.
Mike Garabedian, Placer Group Sierra Club. What I'd like to discuss, kind of off the cuff, is the question of having Planning Commission Meetings in the evening. I noticed that most of the, I think, well, of course, Colfax doesn't have a Planning Commission, but most of the Planning Commission Meetings I've been to, Roseville, Loomis, Lincoln, Auburn, are in the evening, and which certainly makes it easier for people to attend, and makes it perhaps harder for you and your families too, of course. But I just wanted to bring that up as something, we're probably going to try to do a survey and see what's what and the difference, and just bring that up as an interesting question to us.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which we have just one item, which is our notes from the last meeting. So it's the pleasure of the commission.
Move approval.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Can I hear a second? Okay. Richard and then Jeff, roll call.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our 1005 item, the Deerfield Caretaker Housing Unit, the third-party appeal. And just going to hear from Patrick.
Good, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you. I'm Patrick Dobbs from the Planning Services Division. As you mentioned, this next item is the Deerfield Appeal. This is a third-party appeal filed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. This is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve a minor use permit to construct a caretaker's housing unit on a property zone TPZ, or timberland production zone. Additionally, this is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve a variance to allow the maximum floor area of that caretaker's unit to be 3,126 square feet, where normally 1,200 square feet is the maximum allowed for caretaker's units. In addition, the unit does include an attached garage at a little over 1,000 feet, bringing the overall size of the structure to 4,165 square feet. All right, I forgot this. The property is located in the Alta area at 38899 Curzarge Mill Road on the south side of Interstate 80. Drum For Bay is on the west, Blue Canyon on the east. This is about, just under the 5,000-foot elevation. This is an aerial of the property. It covers a broad, mostly flat ridge top. There are some steeper slopes over here on the western edge of the property. It's 66 and a half acres. As I mentioned, it's bordered to the north by I-80. This is the Caltrans Whitmore Station, that facility. It's bordered to the east and south with rural residential development and residential forest zoning. As I mentioned, it's zone, timberland production zone, and the purpose of the TPZ is an exclusive area for growing and harvesting timber and uses that are integral to those timber operations. There is some limited infrastructure on the property. I've kind of highlighted and read here, there's an existing access drive coming out of the southeast corner. Around the star, or the star is around a building foundation. There's also a domestic well that's been installed on the property. You can see from the vegetation pattern that some areas are densely forested, and other areas have been cleared and graded by the previous owner. So here's a look at what some of those existing conditions look on the ground. This is the 18-foot-wide driveway. It's about 2/10 of a mile long. This is, again, some more existing infrastructure. This is the well on the left-hand side. You can see the trench, which runs more than 1,000 feet to the house to get that water. On the right-hand side, not the best picture, but that's the hole where the septic tank would be installed. The proposed structure would be built on an existing building foundation. This caretaker's unit was first approved on the subject property in 2004, and subsequently received several extensions of time. Construction commenced in 2009, and the existing improvements were constructed. However, the project was never completed and the building permit expired. As I said, some of the areas are overstocked, the forest. There's a large buildup of biomass and duff estimated at more than 20 tons an acre in some areas of the property. You can see some of these ladder fuels near the ground where if there was a ground fire, it would quickly climb into a crown fire. Other areas of the property have been massacated and graded in the past by a previous owner. You can see on the left, some of those areas are exhibiting regrowth of flammable materials like manzanita. Other areas like on the right have been scoured, and the little topsoil that there was has been removed, really creating some challenging conditions for regrowth of timber. So let me just transition from the property and those existing conditions to the process and the questions that are being asked of you today. Does the project meet the requirements for a caretaker's unit? This is zone TPZ. Single-family dwellings are not allowed. Caretaker's housing is permissible, but it has additional requirements. You must demonstrate the need for full-time onsite presence. The zoning ordinance requires discretionary minor use permit approval for these caretaker's residents, primarily to ensure that the property continues to be managed for timber production, and that any development on the TPZ is not incompatible with that primary timber production designation in accordance with its zoning restrictions. There is previous forest management history on the property. In 1993, a timber harvest plan was prepared. There was a forest management plan in 2004, some thinning done in 2008, and a small area was replanted in 2010. Due to the changes that have occurred since that 2004 forest management plan, we asked the current owner to update that management plan, and he did so. And the updated 2018 forest management plan makes clear there is significant and ongoing work to justify full-time oversight. Both the 2004 and 2018 forest management plans strongly recommend an onsite caretaker's residence due to the scope of work required for reforestation and increasing commercial timber yield, as well as dangers relating to theft, trespass, and wildfire. The conditions of approval, as recommended, do require an annual report from the applicant to the Planning Director to provide a progress update on timber production activities for the prior year. The second question being asked of you is that if you agree that there is a need for a caretaker's housing unit, is the size of the proposed unit excessive? Are there special circumstances to grant a variance to the floor area? Three years after construction commenced in 2012, the county amended our regulations to establish a 1,200-square-foot maximum for caretaker's units. Based on the aerial photography of the surrounding area, we believe that the building is consistent with the scale and will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has a large family. He supports a family of 10 people, and he purchased this property in 2016 along with engineered plans and the intention to complete the caretaker's unit and implement the timber production recommendations. So given those existing and extenuating circumstances, for this particular property, we believe that the proposed 3,126 square feet is the minimum departure from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The project went to the The project went to the zoning administrator on July 19th. There were letters of opposition from the Public Interest Coalition, as well as the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. There was public testimony provided by the appellant. He spoke about the importance of the forest economy to the state and local areas, and he thought that if the applicant wanted to proceed with this project, he should seek to rezone out of TPZ. That is a 10-year rollout, similar to the Williamson Act that maybe some of you are familiar with. The zoning administrator confirmed that the applicant intends to live in the caretaker's unit and actively manage the forest. He didn't agree that removal of the existing foundation, reconstruction of a smaller foundation, would lessen any impacts. The zoning administrator concluded that the property owner has a right to pursue construction of caretaker's housing, and the forest management plan had demonstrated that need. He didn't feel that it was unreasonable for a family of 10 to share 3,126 square feet and manage 66 acres of land. The zoning administrator approved the minor use permit and variance. The appellant filed the letter of appeal following the zoning administrator's approval. That's included as attachment A of your report. In the letter of appeal, he asserts several contentions, including that the findings in the zoning administrator's report were conclusive and not well-supported. He questions the property's valuation and taxation and whether there's justification for full-time oversight. He would have liked us to do an analysis in comparison to other TPZ properties countywide. Felt that the size of the unit is incompatible with the TPZ designation and that this property would, or the project would represent a conversion from a forest use. The appellant asserts that the applicant hasn't demonstrated a commitment to forest management. He's questioned whether he'll recoup his costs and the precedent that this could set for future TPZ development. We've responded to Mr. Garabedian's claims in the report. We're prepared to discuss that further if you'd like. After the zoning administrator meeting, Mr. Garabedian suggested we bring forward the project to the Agricultural Commission to get a recommendation. We worked closely with the Ag Commission on this project. We were in consultation with him from the outset. We didn't want to introduce a new recommendation after the zoning administrator had already taken action and the project was appealed. So that was really a timing issue for us, bringing this to the Agricultural Commission. This is an opportunity, as we feel. The staff believes that if you're serious about managing the forest for timber harvest, that a large family with multiple generations wanting to take on this challenge is what it's going to take. This project was properly noticed. We received two additional public comments in support of the project. And so staff recommends the planning commission approve the minor use permit and variance. There are three actions that we ask of you today: to deny the appeal filed by the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork; find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to the provisions of Section 15303. This is the Class III exemption for new construction of small structures; and finally uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the minor use permit and variance, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and based on the findings in the staff report. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can answer your questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Looks like we've got a number of them.
Patrick, when was that foundation? You know, you had a photo up there with the foundation. When was that installed? You don't have to put the photo up there. Do you know when it was installed?
It was installed in 2009.
2009?
Yes.
Jeff?
If the commission were to support the appeal today, is there any requirement from the county that says that this existing foundation would have to be removed?
Let me think about your question for a moment. I'm not aware of a requirement to remove the foundation.
So, I mean, from what I understand, they could then come in and apply to build a 1,200-square-foot structure that they have the ability to build, and that would stay the way it sits?
They would still need this minor use permit, this discretionary approval to establish the use, but yes...
But the existing improvements that sit there could still be sitting there in their unfinished state. It's not like it would have to be returned back to its native condition.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had, the necessity or the justification of 24-hour operation requirements, I'm assuming that security falls in that as part of the operation?
Yes, we believe so. I mean, and the report speaks to this. Certainly, there are many quiet nights up there, but as the applicant may tell you, there have been many evenings where utility companies or emergency services have asked to come onsite because it's much easier to access than from the interstate 80 side of the property. So, you know, the 24-hours oversight deals with trespass, theft, and security.
Okay, thank you. Mike.
Okay. I heard you address the TPZ countdown. Is this currently in a TPZ countdown?
No, this has not been noticed for non-renewal. This is currently zone TPZ, and there is no rollout that's been initiated.
I think we'll have some more questions later, but we'll go ahead and listen to the fellow.
A number of questions, probably, but one is, one of the issues is, they're not going to be paying their fair share of taxes, but in the staff report, you mentioned that the house would be assessed separately from the remainder of the TPZ.
Yes, similar to the tax bills that you're familiar with, where there's a land improvement value and a structure improvement value. Mr. Deerfield's tax bill will basically have a three-tiered structure. There will be the land improvement value around the house. That would be based on the price of one or two acres when he purchased the property in 2016. Then there would be a land value or a structure value assessed to the improvements. That would be based on the quality of construction and the size of the unit. And then for the remainder 62 acres or so, that would continue to receive the tax break on the TPZ. So the remaining forest land would continue to receive a tax break, and that tax is recouped at harvest time. But, you know, we believe the owner would be paying his share in taxes as it relates to the new construction.
Another question. The appeals suggested rezoning this property, what to, and how does that conform with the overall goals of the county to maintain timberland?
I think Mr. Garabedian could answer what he's suggesting. I would assume residential forest. That's the surrounding residential developed area. And the second part of your question was, how does that conform to the county's...
Well, I guess that would be for Mr. Garabedian to discuss is how that would support the county's goal.
I think Mr. Garabedian believes that, you know, this takes away from the forest opportunities on the property, while we believe that this is really the only way to actively manage the forest is to have people there. So we share a similar interest in the outcome of an actively managed forest. It's just the difference in how to get there.
Any other question? Patrick, great. Obviously, bring him back up later. Thank you, Patrick.
Yes.
I'm sorry I'm asking this now. I should ask the planning director and county council as far as the next step. Is it, do we give the applicant the opportunity to kind of add anything to Patrick now, or do we ask the appellant to speak now, and then the applicant can speak afterwards?
I believe we ask the appellant to speak first, and then the applicant can speak afterwards, and then public comment.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Garabedian.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian, representing Friends of the North Fork and the Sierra Club. This appeal is brought because we, as we will explain, feel the county is not implementing the TPZ law as required in this case. Now, if we were going to have the full interaction that I imagine is necessary, as you'll see, because there are a lot of issues that the staff has simply not addressed, I could imagine maybe an hour and a half for our presentation. I don't think that'll happen, but you'll see that there are a number of things I think we need to discuss and to go into a little detail as we go along. First of all, we feel it's a terrible mistake that the Ag Commission wasn't involved. You know, they have one member on there who is on there because representing timber, and we really need, the county has not gotten that input that I've seen from anyone else, and that would have been a good place to start, regardless of what happened historically as I point out. And as the staff says, there is no vested right when it comes to TPZ land, although it is on other properties in the county. So what we're missing, just kind of a quick list, is the, you know, there are two CALFire captains in this building, and one of them to this area. We don't know that they've been consulted for their opinion about these various forestry and fire issues. There's the unit chief, for instance, who was involved in the prior big caretaker issue, and there's the CALFire THP review people, and there's TPC staff at headquarters, and there's conversion staff, the Board of Forestry Committee staff. And even at this meeting, when, at the public comment period, I brought up the need for the county and said there's a real need to involve foresters in this. I think the county's water person said he had four foresters who might be able to help.
Did you say that, excuse me, did you say that all those CALFire or CGF people were consulted, or they were not consulted?
Well, there's an indication of who was consulted, and it does not include any of those people. So no, I don't know of anyone that was consulted with the forestry, timber harvest or fire, or any of the logical people that should have been, you know, unit chief and so forth that I mentioned. And I think that the report makes it clear that they haven't had that kind of input from someone outside the applicant. So the, I guess, this is basically a, the handout package here I have for people has a, has a picture. And before we get to the picture, I'll point out that you also have there a copy of a courtesy violation notice for this property dated July 5, 2017. And then the staff, the staff letter after that that advised, advised James LaRang in July 2017 that this needed to go through the, another minor use permit and variance process for what was being proposed. And then that was two months after the July 5 served the FED mail, and then two weeks after that, the variance and minor use permit applications were made. Now, this, the photo, which I got from Mr. Dobbs, it shows the, I don't know when it was taken, I'm not quite sure of the orientation of this picture, but it shows where the foundation is, and then it shows what looks to me an awful lot like a pretty big mobile home. And the question we don't know the answer to is what happened to that violation after the courtesy notice? Is the violation still there? How was it resolved? We just don't know. Is that, is that structure still there and so forth? So that's our beginning.
Could I ask what date that photo is?
Sorry?
The date of the photo.
I can't hear you.
The date of the photo?
I still can't hear you.
What day was that photo taken on?
I don't know. I got it on around the same date from Mr. Dobbs, about the same date as the first hearing from the, with the, with Mr. Rosasco.
So in 2018?
That was from the hearing date this year in July about that. That's when I got it. I don't know when it was taken.
All right.
So the, the project, there's a question about the project description. The, I'm going to hand out a prior description of the property, just for your information. And this describes, as we were talking before the meeting started, now this describes what is in the staff report, living area of 3130 square feet, garage of 1039, and this also has a porch on it of 1,487 feet. So the question is, is that porch still part of the project? And I could not tell from the staff report, and, or the early, it seems to be obviously part of the earlier application, and I don't know what's happened to that. So that's, that's a question. So now I'm going to hand out a map that shows the Deerfield property and other TPZ properties in the immediate, in the nearby area. So that's pretty close to that. And the first thing I'm going to use this map for is the CEQA exemption, which this project does not qualify in any way. The report says that it's a Class III exemption for small structures, that it qualifies for that. And there is, there is a Class III language that applies to all of the Class III items, and it says Class III consists of construction and location of limited numbers of new, small facilities or structures, et cetera, et cetera. Well, and then, under 1A, it talks about one single-family residence. So just on those, just on its own structure alone, this is certainly not a small structure by any means of the imagination, especially not considering what the zoning requires at 1,200. And it is also not a single-family residence. The, you know, there's talk of a family member's boyfriend, but then the, there's talk of it being a barracks in the 2014 forest management plan. It talks about being a place for a number of people to come and stay in the barracks, stay in the house. And of course, this, single-family homes are not permitted in this zone, as stated by Mr. Dobbs, but this is a, this is obviously being contemplated as a residential facility. Now, the CEQA guidelines have exceptions to the exemptions, and there are three exceptions to the exemption that would apply here and not allow it to be exempt categorically. And by the way, if it was found to not be exempt, that means it'd have to do an initial study and see what comes next, whether MND or MAR, not like the EIR, but at least to assess the situation. And there are a number of important issues here, like TPZ, and what happens to the forest lands, the fire prevention, and so forth. So the three, the three exceptions, one of them is may impact on an environmental resource of critical concern where that concern is designated, precisely mapped, and officially adopted pursuant to law. You couldn't describe it better about TPZ as being something that would take this right out of the exception, the exemption. But secondly, the cumulative impacts of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. We'll get to the map in a minute on that. And finally, the project throws us a threat to a precedent to other land in the area, namely TPZ. So let's look at the map. The TPZ1 is in the middle of the heavily, heavily outlined parcel. And TPZ2 is the property, that property has, it's TPZ, and it's about 47 acres, I think, and it has a house on it, a house that was, the last permit for it was actually in 2013, and it's, I think, let's see, 24, 2,490-square-foot house put on there, which, I don't know the history of that, why it was, why were they able to put it over the limit, I think there was a minor use permit, I don't know. Now, all of the rest of the TPZ parcels noted, number four and five in the upper corner, 80 and 320 acres, number six, which is 320 acres, and then swinging around on the south side of Interstate 80, TPZ number three, which is 80 acres, and then right across the freeway, TPZ number seven and eight, where there's, I think, 70 acres, and then, I don't have the acreage of number eight. But of course, then you'll see along the other side of the highway, the 160-acre zone. So the terribly unfortunate precedent that this could be setting without the proper analysis is that those two parcels, both of them end up with these houses on it, far in excess of the minimum. It could affect those, affect those properties and be, be a fact, important factor in changing the nature of the forest resources on these properties. So we're quite, quite concerned about that. Not only a reason to have the... It's just one, not only reason to have the proper, not to exempt it from SEQA and analysis, but also for the purposes of the TPZ laws, is I'll get into a little more detail. So the two forest management plans, the one from 2004 and the one from 2014, really don't make a case for a large caretaker house. The 2014 certainly advocates a caretaker house. And, and quote, it says, "Depending on the amount and type of future management, including fire protection, it may be necessary to have a large residence or barracks." Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading the 2018 one. "May be necessary to have a large residence or barracks for long-term occupancy to house a workforce." Well, I'll jump ahead to the 2018. There's nothing, there's no analysis leading up to that throughout the entire line-by-line forest management plan. There's, there's no, for instance, it analyzes the use of capacity of soils for forest management. It doesn't look at the capacity for having 10 people or a huge house on the land. And even in that case, it's not a ringing endorsement for this giant residential use. And going back to the 2004 Forest Management Plan, that's the one that says, "There's more than enough work to recommend this report to justify a full-time person." Now, that's interesting, because the two reports are kind of standing out there, and it's confusing. They conflict. One of the main conflicts in terms of interest of forestry is that the 2004 recommended a, about a 25-acre area for Christmas trees. Now, there's no mention of that. It's really dropped in the second report, and that, that could have some intensity of need, though of course, highly skilled people to prune Christmas trees and so forth. So there's really, there's no real argument that we can see, real justification in the forest management plans. And in fact, it's quite clear that the issues I'm going to go into now about TPZ, that those foresters were either not aware of, or didn't, I don't know. There's just no mention of the TPZ legal issues and on-the-ground issues. So this, the new owner has had it for two years, and there's, there's no indication that in that two years, except, it certainly got a new forest management plan dated this year, there's no indication that any improvements have been made, forest improvements. There is one improvement you can see walking around the property, as I did with one of the neighbor who appeared and opposed this at the zoning administrator. It looks like what you could call a vegetation privacy fence is being generated by irrigating the brush along the border. It's a, it's very thick. I can't tell it was 20 or 30 or 40 feet thick, because it's very thick. A fire hazard, obviously. But, and that is, attention to the boundaries and laying out the boundaries, marking the boundaries is one of the recommendations in the 2014 report. But we remain, we remain to hear if there's any kind of a forest improvement done on the land. And we understand from the neighbors that they are up there, just out every weekend with people on the land. And of course, the, the staff report that we submitted, that I believe is with you, there was a staff report in 2014. And that staff report said, because there hasn't been forest improvement, the staff recommended against continuing the request in that, in that aspect. I think it was for the house, I just, I don't remember offhand. But of course, the staff report apparently wasn't followed. Now, this brings up something very important about TPZ. Yeah, there's no, there's no vested right to TPZ, but TPZ can be taken away if you aren't, if you aren't doing your forest management. So let's look at the forest management plan, the one for this year. It requires, it specifies planting 21.3 acres at a cost of $7,000. It's this year. Now, the TPZ law requires, I'm looking, jumping ahead of myself. Well, I'll back up. When the county initially approves a TPZ, it has to approve, according to the law, it has to approve the forest management plan. Now, if it finds that the forest management plan isn't being followed, and this is what should have happened, I guess, in 2014, the law says that the landowner has to sign an agreement with the county that it will bring it up to the mandatory Board of Forestry Regulation for stand, stand, I forget the right word. In other words, for the stocking requirement, that they have to bring it up in five years. Now, we may already be one year behind on that. The staff is recommending an annual report, which is far low, below, actually, a statement saying we are going to do that, bring it up to par, bring it up to the stocking requirement in five years. Now, and so if this permit was issued, it certainly should require the owner to sign an agreement like that about the stocking standards. They will be met in the fifth year of signing. And we're talking about something right now that has nothing to do with, whether there's a caretaker house on it or not. This is simply part TPZ requirement, to be able to get, but I'll go into, this amazing tax break that you get only as long as you are doing a forest operation. So here's, here's the, here's the language in the, in the law. This law, by the way, was, this, the timber, the taxation reform law was enacted in 1976 by Charles Warren, who was then Chair of the Assembly, Assembly Environmental Committee. He's still alive at 91 in Sacramento, obviously not in the legislature. But this guy, this, he was a master legislator. And you can see from that bill, that, that law, that there's no stone left unturned. And that is why, to me, it's a bit more difficult. I even, I did spend four and a half years as a staff council for the state enforcing the Williamson Act and interpreting it. And that, that also applied to reviewing conservation easements. Conservation easements are also, well, those are in perpetuity, and so are the 10-year rollouts in this and the 10-year non-renewal in, in Williamson Act. They are enforceable restrictions under the state constitution. And so when this law was written, it requires final, let's get this more in the sequence here. I think I will come back to that. I thought I had the language marked here. Oh, here it is, okay. About the forest plan, Section 5113(c)(2). The plan, talks about forest management. "The plan shall provide for the eventual harvest of timber within a reasonable period of time as determined by the preparer of the plan." And the current, the parcels shall meet, it has to meet the current stocking requirements, or the owner must sign an agreement with the board or council, I guess it means the Board of Supervisors, or city council, to meet those stocking standards and forest practice rules by the fifth anniversary of signing of the agreement. Failure to meet the stocking standards and forest practice rules within this time period provides the board of council with a ground for rezoning the parcel pursuant to such-and-such a section. So, all right, TPZ. You have the, as part of the handout, you have the reports from the tax, the tax reports that show that this property is paying about $117 a year in, in property taxes now. And of course, it's paying that because in 1974, that provision was added to the state constitution allowing properties not to be taxed at, at, in the way they were. And there were a lot of concerns about this, about, from local governments. There were environmental concern, concerns from the environmental community, concern from the local government, and concern from landowners too, that there, there might not be, there might be a sudden payment of a lot, or there might not be any income to the county for long periods of time and things like that. And so it is set up now so that when the lumber is harvested, it is, it goes to the state and it's sent, sent back out to the counties. At least that was proposed in the bill at the time. And so this, this kind of taxation was not, taxation was not possible before that constitutional provision was required. And you're probably more familiar with it than Williamson Act, same thing. And the restriction, it would allow this restriction on the growing and harvesting of timber, which provisions for the Advilor and taxation were based, are now based on the restriction. And so it provides for a yield tax now, which applies to the value of timber at the time of harvest. And timber was exempted from property tax, this went into effect as of 1997, exempted from the property tax. And the yield, the yield tax commenced at that time. I think I've covered the rest of this. TPZ is the heart of enforceable restrictions required by the constitution. TP is a locally imposed zoning ordinance, which is applicable for 10 years, with one year being added each anniversary date of the zoning, in effect, a 10-year rolling And compatible uses are defined, both in the state law and in your zoning. And so the county establishes those, those rules in their zoning. And, okay. Getting through this now. So what's happened on the property next door that has a house is indicative. That, I think my notes on that pointed out that the, the house, the area right around the house has a $300, $2,000 item listed in the taxation matters, and then $150, $150 a year going on with, with, for the 47 acres. I just repeat that because that, that is what we're saying is not compatible with TPZ. Thank you for your patience. So the, the zoning, the zoning does require, and there's quite, there's a list of things that are compatible. And they have all of them except one thing, the need for a caretaker residence, and we are not objecting to a 1,200-square-foot caretaker residence on this property. That's it. Now, there's a whole list of other things, and they have to do with logging landings and equipment necessary for harvesting and on and on and on. And clearly, you don't need a house if you need a crew to come in or something. I mean, you know, I know someone who does 600 acres of TPZ, and they do it all themselves throughout the whole year, because we have people working for living here that may not have that time available, but nonetheless, for 60, for these 66 acres, it's not really warranted. So what is, how is a, how is a, such a huge structure incompatible with a TPZ? It seems just readily evident to me. The county itself in 2012 put that 1,200-square-foot limit in there for caretaker houses. And the one other issue we were involved in, which was on Gillis Hill Ridge, a 600-acre TPZ, you and the county did end up approving an 800-square-foot house, which happened to be the same size as the landowner next door and his wife, who had, also had a 600 acres. Though that house hasn't been, been built yet that I know of. So it's, it's hard for me to understand how that could be justified in this situation. The staff has looked at this and concluded that it makes sense from a family point of view, a big family point of view, but from our point of view, that is a, you know, is taking it, in effect, takes it out of TPZ to have parking spaces required for six people, according to the zoning, or for the number of people. And maybe, maybe we should, well, I'll make our concluding comments. We've mentioned it can't be a year-round residence. What the, just like the Williamson Act, TPZ law in the, where the legislature says why they're doing this in that Warren bill, it has to do with urbanization, the pressures of population, and the declining base of lumber. I think everybody here, and there's no doubt in my mind, everyone in this room wants to increase our forest economy and keep it going and keep it healthy, and have markets for it, and have people able to do their trees without, without having neighbors that, with dogs or whatever, who knows? Without, you know, without having something that interferes with their, having logging trucks going in and out, heavy equipment and all that. It's, it's really a rural use. It's a rural use now. So, and our job here is not, our job here, we're trying to help the county, we're trying to help you, which is what was our same approach to the Bunch Creek rezone, where the county denied that 600-acre, you know, complete rezone. This, it's a complicated area. It needs legal input from somebody knowledgeable in this. I have some knowledge, but I'm not an expert. Just the amount of time it took for me to put the old, everything together was, was something else. So we would, of course, hope you would support the appeal, but there are other options, and probably the best option from all around in our attitude of trying to help would be for us, for you to put it over, if you can, so we can meet and go into detail with the staff on these issues, and try to understand how we are going to get the TPZ law properly implemented here, so that landowners like the Darefields don't have a misunderstanding of what they're required to do and what's necessary. I mean, the 2018, maybe the, maybe the forester who did the forest management plan didn't know, because after 2018, it says that's what they're going to do this year, and then the next three steps, there's little question marks after each one, which is, which is, which is not what's supposed to happen. So, so we, I guess we're basically saying that we hope there's some way to find out a second chance for the staff to really sink his teeth into this without having to, without approving the project, and not necessarily even having to deny the appeal, or approve the appeal. But, but that's up to you. And so those are my comments. I might like to come back and say a few things later.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Appreciate you being very focused on what you wanted to say.
Anything, any questions?
Any questions for him before he sits down? Or, do you have one, Jeff?
If I understood that correctly, one of the things you suggested was that the applicant rezoned the property to accommodate a residence as opposed to a caretaker? Was that accurate?
Well, I wouldn't put it that way. What I would say that, that it seems to me that putting this house on there is a conversion to a non-forest use. And so I'm not saying that I am not an expert in that. I've never dealt with a forest conversion permit. They're handled by CalFire, and they go along, go on all the time with SEQA and everything else applied to them. So that would be my concern. I don't have a legal opinion to say they would have to do that, but, but that would be my view, that this, this would change the use of the property. It certainly would, it should take it out, and the county, if they, if they do, if they do sign an agreement and go ahead and do the forest necessary for a 1,200-square-foot house, that would probably solve the problem. There may be other ways to solve the problem. I don't think, I doubt that anybody in this room favors taking land out of TPZ. We want to keep that land in timber production. So if it came to, if it came to the...
So if they came in to rezone the property residential, my assumption is the Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork would also be up here opposing that?
I don't know, I, I don't, well, let's see, would they? I think, I think we're saying that might be necessary right now, that if this is approved. And I think we would, I think the next step would be for us to send a letter to the Board of Forestry and CalFire to say, "What do you think?" So if there's an immediate, if there is, if it is taken out, if it is taken out, and here's why, if it is taken out, if they aren't meeting the requirement, the stocking requirements... and so forth, after the county acts, I think by a supermajority, to take away the zoning, it has to go to the Board of Forestry, I believe. So, there are the experts, you know, they might be able to answer that question.
Well, I wasn't worried about what their opinion is right now. I'm just, as you're, as the representative of Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork, my assumption is, is that if the, if the applicant did come in to rezone this, to accommodate the residents, that, that you would probably be in opposition to that also.
I don't know. We haven't considered that.
If, if the goal is to keep it TPZ, I would think that would be a safe assumption.
I don't know, because under the Williamson Act, you, you give notice and you're out in 10 years. Any, any Williamson Act contractor can do that. In this case, only the landowner, the county can't. If, if, if the landlord wants to get out of TPZ, he's the one who makes that decision, and it can't be initiated by the county. So, so, you know, that, that seems to be the hypothetical you're, you're imagining, if, if the owner wanted to get out, if they wanted to put this McMansion there and get out of TPZ. But clearly, well, anyway, so, that might very well be consistent with what the law allows, if the landlord made that decision.
One, I guess, last question that, that...
So I can't specifically answer that, but...
I'd like to, like your input on. County code decide, because we're asking for a variance, how does the size of the structure affect the quality, with the, with the exception of the actual amount of timber that could be produced on that enlarged footprint? How does the size of the structure affect the timber production capability of the property?
I don't know how to answer that.
Thank you.
But I will say this. It's not permissible, it's not permissible to be getting that $117 a year tax rate under the state constitution, and to have an incompatible use with it.
My understanding is the county's already addressed the taxation issue.
Are you talking about the assessor? No, it's up, it's up to you. It's up to, it's up to you recommending for the board to...
And there has been a solution presented for that, is my understanding, that would, would affect the taxable value of the property as well as the structure.
Well, this is a long...
Out of, out of the favorable conditions of the TPZ.
Well, what that is, and what's been done for years, according to a manual, the assessors have looked at this and reported, gotten together and decided what to do, is what, it's not their decision. If, if the county makes a decision to say that's compatible, all the assessor can do is do their job, which is to put the structure value, to assess the structure value, immediately around that parcel, parcel, and not the rest. You know, so you could have somebody with a million-dollar home paying $117 years of property taxes, and that's prohibited by the Constitution.
But, but in this case, that, that wouldn't be the case.
It would be prohibited. It would be illegal.
Right. Any other questions, Garabedian, moment?
I might have some later, but, no.
Yeah, we'll let the applicant make some comments if they would like.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for keeping it under an hour and a half. Would the applicant like to come up and make any comments?
Hello.
Hi. Could you give us your name?
I'm pretty due at this, yeah, Shabir Field, I'm the applicant. I got to tell you, I'm taking notes with what he's been saying during, during his testimony, and it's all over the place, I can't even keep up with it. His evidence that he provided was just provided here at the hearing, so I have no time to go through it and, you know, come back with rebuttals, because there's so many rebuttals. But a couple of things I am concerned with, with purchasing the property, one being trespassing issues. He just said on public record that he trespassed on the property.
I did not. That's totally false. It was on the property next door. That's outrageous.
You, I think you did say that you...
Let's keep the comments.
Okay. I think he did say that, that he was on there. And actually, the neighbor that, that he's talking about, we do have video, a camera of him going on to, onto the property too. I, I think the issue here is on my end of it. Obviously, this has been a substantial hardship for our family. We've purchased the property with plans engineered with a permit. Going to the county, talking to the county, saying, is this all we need to do? We need to continue this permit to do this, checking into the forest management, what we were getting into. Unbeknownst to us, months later, it was discovered that the minor use permit was not, was expired. And it unraveled at that point. Talking, going back and forth via email to, to county representatives, the previous owner going back through it, previous owners claiming that they spoke to the county permit department and that the permit was valid, and that they didn't have to worry about the minor use permit. And so this went on back and forth until it got to a point that we need to just apply for a minor use permit, and we're here today. This has been over a year that this has occurred. I, I've got to say, I want to put it out there, that the county, in this process, has been, has been awesome. I, I think that for someone coming into it that doesn't know all of these rules, and unaware with what the Sierra Club involvement is in Placer County, because you don't hear much of, of them, not knowing that they would come in and put an obstacle in place, and make the county officials, Patrick Dobbs has worked endless to make sure that he's, he's done an investigation from top to bottom. I think I've spoke to him, hours upon hours of him investigating, make sure that everything is correct, everything is right. And to me, it's just, obviously, it's America, it's, it's allowed, there are public hearings, there's processes that are in place. But as I sit back, and our family sits back and goes, what are we to do? We just sit here year after year as there's no property, no building that's allowed to be built until this is through. Foundation that's in place, foundation that's been approved by the building department and signed off on. Water permit, no longer, there's a well permit that was in place, water connection can't be done, septic connection can't be done. The mobile home that he's speaking of is not a mobile home, it's an RV, and has no hookup, so it can only be there for a day and a half and has to leave. There's, there's no way to do it. Makes it very hard to maintain the property at this point. I'm still not understanding, and Mr. Moss brought up a point that I was thinking about and have thought about through the last two hearings, is I can't figure out what the Sierra Club's opposition is here at this point. They're talking about tax. That's what they keep talking about, not environmental issues on this property. If they really cared about the environmental issues on this property, then they would let us continue to go forward and do the right thing, and manage this property. We went forward and, and paid for a new forest management plan. We actually seeked one of the best professionals in this area, in really, from my understanding, the five-county area, and he's rebutting that report. My understanding is this individual has done work for the Sierra Club and different organizations in the past, is also a UN representative, so he's, he's not a schmuck. He's actually a very well-known and expensive forest manager. And I think his report was very well-written. I had long talks with him of what I need to do and how we need to do it. And he was, he addressed the fact that this is a massive undertaking. The, the other issue here is, there's definite discussion from the Sierra Club side, talking about the production of the forest, the production of the forest. But not, nothing said about the protection of the forest from fire danger. And I wish I would have been able to bring in a picture, but the North Fire, the immigrant Gap Fire that occurred here recently, I'm sure you're all aware of it, it was on the news, at one point, that was eight miles away from the property. Eight miles away. And that's how important it is. You see the pictures of how the overgrowth, the concern, and really, these properties talking to other TPZ owners, it's become, it's become protection at this point. CalFire, when you talk to CalFire, CalFire looks at protection. We need you to protect the property. You need the overgrowth, the ladder fuels, you need to get this stuff under control. That's what we're most concerned about, because of these fires like the North Fire. Again, I'm not, I'm not seeing the, the issue with the tax, it's very well-adressed, and as I look at, as a layman, I look up the state law, I look up the county rules. The assessor, I, I believe Patrick said that it was one to two acres, I thought I read it was three acres. You get assessed the same value on, on the dwelling, and you pay the same exact tax on that dwelling that a person right next door pays. And acreage that that dwelling sits on, between one and three acres of acreage, then the rest of the acreage gets taxed at a rate that is set by the assessor. So, what he's saying is incorrect. There's no, the only tax savings is on the remaining acreage that's being forested. The dwelling has absolutely nothing to do with that. But his continued argument is back to taxes. But taxes are not the point. It has nothing to do with the dwelling. The dwelling gets taxed as any dwelling within this county. The 1,200 square feet that went into effect, I've talked to many TPZ owners, several within the community, they're, they're very, they were bummed to hear this. They were not aware that there was a dwelling, a cap that went into effect. They point-blank said that they would not have, they wouldn't go forward with TPZ property if that was in effect, that they thought that that was, that it wouldn't be able to manage properties. I can't believe someone 600 acres can manage that property that he's talking about without having a dwelling on that property. So, it was very unfortunate that, when I talked to them, that they heard that. The owners within the area, Mr. Garabedian said that there was a 2,094 square feet, he has written on here, it was, it was, it's 2,490 square feet, and I actually talked to that owner, and he was one that said that he was unaware of the 1,200-square-foot maximum caretaking quarters, but currently has 2,400, and I believe it was 90 square feet that, that he has on that property. And it's, it's within like to, to that community. I think at the end here, and I don't want to take a lot of time, the previous owners continued to try to build that dwelling. They got approved, they ran out of money, they did as much as they possibly could do. When they sold the property, obviously, there was, everything was completed, the county taxes were paid for the dwelling, and they got to the foundation, and they couldn't take it any, any further at that point. So it, it was grandfathered in of the, the 1,200-square-foot dwelling cap. However, I think the, I know the zoning commissioner saw, and I think he was very professional, and he had very good points, that, I believe he said at one point, that you're allowed multiple 1,200-square-foot dwellings. And I believe it says that in, in the county code, multiple 1,200-square-foot dwellings. There's also allowable, I believe it says in there, in it, I don't have the technical or legal term in there, but I believe it also says that you're allowed to have other structures to maintain that property. And I believe the other structures would be warehouses or garages, detached garages to maintain forest equipment, tractors, et cetera. And the zoning commissioner brought that up, that we're talking here about a situation where you could have multiple 1,200-square-foot dwellings. You could have other dwellings on that property that are allowable within the county code. I think at the end of the day, he saw that, that there's already a dwelling started. It would be a shame for it to be torn down, and it would be a hardship, a financial hardship for that to happen, obviously, for us, that it's already engineered, the county taxes are paid for. I'm not sure what I would do if that, if that happened. I don't see it feasible how a 1,200-square-foot dwelling would sit there, and there would be a foundation sitting next to it that's connected to it. I think that question was answered. I mean, to me, it's, it's just not feasible. What we're asking to do here is just continue what was approved throughout the years on that property, and there was a mistake made under the direction of some county members, and at no fault to them, that there was just a deep-rooted policy that was in there, and it was under where to them, that, that if they didn't have an active permit, then the minor use permit would expire. And that was told to me as well, that they didn't realize that deeper into the county code, that the permit had to be active during that whole entire process. They thought that once you have a foundation signed, a permit, and the foundation signed off on, then it would commence at that point, and the MUP would stay in place. So I think it's, it's unfortunate all the way around, but at the end of the day here, the tax issue is a non-issue. This is the argument that keeps coming up. The residents around this whole entire area have larger homes. The TPZ around the area have larger homes. The impact on that property, when it comes to the environment, is minimal compared to the foundation being tore out. I would think that that would be much more damage to the environment at that point, having to tear out the foundation and go through that process. So, I'm asking you to uphold the zoning commissioner's approval, and I hope you see our side. Thank you.
Okay, just a moment, I think you might have some questions from some of the commissioners. Jeff, do you want to start?
Your, the 2018 forest management plan, is that a, a fully executed? I mean, that is a done document.
Yes.
Would you fill me in on what agencies, government-wise, were involved in that plan?
I believe in that plan, he's noted CalFire code. I don't think the forest manager ends up contacting them directly. I think that part of his professional degree, that he goes through the CalFire code, he goes through the state code, and his expertise, and that's what he has highlighted in there, to, to maintain the property. There's multiple sections in there that talks about fire prevention, and talks about CalFire, and even talks about obtaining grants from CalFire in there. But I don't think that, in the report, he discusses that he contacted them directly, because it's, I don't think they do that.
And then that's just approved by the county?
The forest management report gets handed to the county. I don't think there's an approval process. It's mainly, my understanding every year, is giving them a report of what has transpired, giving them a copy of the forest management report, and on our end, our job is letting them know every year that this is what we've had done thus far.
Okay. And did this appeal, did it kind of delay your implementation of the plan? I give, just an assumption, but I'll ask, if you had to implement the plan by leaving the property every day and coming back in, I'm assuming that that would substantially increase the amount of traffic on local roads and in and out and, and everything else on the property?
Yes, sir.
Before we move to the next commissioner's questions, I just wanted to say that we, as a commissioner, blessed to have a forester in our group. And so we appreciate any input that he's going to give. So Rich, some questions?
Oh yeah, well, I'm busted. I am a registered professional forester. And I'll also have to admit that if you took pictures of people that trespassed, you'll probably see my picture there, because I did go up and visit the area to get a sense of what we're talking about. Let me see, I guess the question that I have for you is, what's your experience in forestry or agricultural type activities?
None, honestly. Went into this with a dream, started researching it. And when we decided to purchase the property, it was, it was going to be a family endeavor to move up there and start harvesting and start planting. And so really, it's a dream. And now trying to learn how that process goes. And the forester that we hired, he was, he was awesome. He spent a lot of time going through what I should be doing, how I should do it. He's going to be my outlet to call, to make sure that I've got everything correct. Because again, I'm, I'm learning as I go. And I think a lot of TPZ properties are that way. I don't think, there's too many of them within Placer County that are professional forest companies that are actually working on these TPZ properties. And I'm the same. I'm making it work and hope to be a professional in the next 10 years and pass it on to the kids and have them do the same.
Yeah, I can hear that. I guess probably what you'll find out is, most of the activities you're talking about, we're talking about planting, clearing, thinning, logging, those normally are all contract operations. So really, your, your job is going to be mainly working with contracts to get all that work done, I would say. That's, that'd be my experience. I do differ with you on TPZ properties in Placer County. We do have several very large, in fact, most of them are very large TPZ properties. And so I think along Interstate 80 there, probably you have a quite a few smaller ones. And I think, looking at your property that you have, I kind of wondered why it's shaped the way it is. It's kind of an awkward shape. And when you look at the bigger picture, it, at one time belonged to PG&E. And they would have managed all those properties in there as kind of one TPZ. And being that it's bisected by the Interstate 80, it made sense probably for PG&E to sell parcels on the south side of Interstate 80 to individual people. And in your property, it looks like several of the people that actually bought it from PG&E were foresters, like Walt Saunders, I remember his name, and Larrang, they're family loggers. So basically, that's maybe just a little bit of information that, just looking at it, that I saw. So, but anyway, we can get into more detail later, but we'll see if there's any more questions from the rest of the commission.
Any other questions for Mr. Bearfield at this time? Thank you very much. I guess at this point, can I ask County Council again, or Planning Director, do I allow for further discussion on this by allowing Mr. Gary Beadiehan or the appellant?
Anybody else that's here?
Or, oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I should have said, open it to the public. Okay, it would be the next step, sorry. So is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on? I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Can anybody jump up? So I guess we'll, who would like to please step forward and, if you'd mention, if you'd say your name, step up to the mic.
My name is June Bolger. And I just had a question for the applicant. It sounded like that there was going to be some timber production, and that's the intent of that, that land, and he would be planting and harvesting timber. And then, so that, that concerns me because I'm, mostly everything else up there is residential, so there'd be, again, lots of trucks and things going in and out of our road. And that, you know, that's going to be a hardship on us as far as the cost of maintaining our road, because that's what we do. And I would just like to say, I would be in favor of rezoning that as residential, because that's what everything else is up there. There's about 25 or 30 residential houses, families up there. You put a production, commercial production in that area would be a hardship.
Just a question, because you mentioned that the issue is concerned about the truck activity. The, it would access roads that you folks use, so there isn't a separate, because I'm assuming there's a frontage road. Like Rich, I didn't get up to see it, but I assume that there's a frontage road that then their, their access road goes to, of the logging road.
I don't know that that's true. There is a frontage road down at the bottom by the, but the slope of that, that property is probably 1,000 feet up. So I'm wondering if that is a feasible access for that road.
Is that road, you live along the same road?
I live on that, on Kearsarge Mill Road, yeah.
Okay, is that, is that a county road or a private road?
It's a private road.
So it's private property?
Yeah, we maintain the road through our dues, through our association.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment?
Just one more question from Mr. Bearfield.
Do you want to step back up?
At least my understanding of TPZ is that, you know, if you were to entertain the idea of that property not being TPZ, one question, one way you could deal with it is to ask the Board of Supervisors to, for rezone. And then, of course, ultimately, you'd have to go to the Board of Forestry for approval. And that would be kind of an immediate opportunity, is I understand. Okay, the other opportunity that you might have or want to consider is 10-year rollout. And you can, you know, you can request that at any time. And what that would do is, you know, after 10 years, it would go back to another zoning, probably residential forestry or something like that. And you'd have the same options to do, you know, do the work that you want to do on the property to maintain it, but you would be free of the TPZ requirement. Have you considered either of those options, or anybody suggested that to you?
I've, I've looked into it a little bit. I haven't contacted an attorney on how the process goes. Obviously, I'm waiting to see how everything transpires here and, and see if, you know, what direction we're moving forward. I do kind of agree with her. It is, it's a very unique situation there. It's, you said you went up there and looked. It's a, it's a residential community there and access is off of Kearsarge Mill Road. We are part of the maintenance fees and, you know, paying for that roadway.
And it was recently maintained. It's very good shape.
They do a great job, great job at it. And so I do agree with her that it's a very unique parcel in the fact of it's smack dab in the middle of a residential community. The access from I-80 is impossible, like you said, the grade is, you can't get down there. Utility companies do access, and I get calls constantly to go up there and meet with them. AT&amp;T has a vault right on the property. There's PG&E and AT&amp;T has lines running through the property. They send up, not only their maintenance workers, but they also send up private contractors that call. Just had one, matter of fact, last week, that called, can you meet me up here? We need to go, there's a tree, we've, we've got three or four trees that are coming close to our lines. And we need to go there and, and cut them down. I have found, unfortunately, they leave the clippings, they cut it down and, and leave everything there for the homeowner to take care of. But they do maintain it, and it's a constant maintaining of that. AT&amp;T has also been there to their vault, which is, which is right on the property. And then also, the main fiber line that runs all the way up, and I believe it goes probably I-80 into Nevada, runs through the property. And, and so it's, it's right straight through the property, then it hits, gets back on to Kearsarge Mill Road. So there's a lot of maintenance activity that, that goes on there as well. You know, the rollback, I'm not sure how that whole process works. I do question with reading some of the county documents, some of the certified documents that were in the file before, when would that process start? Is it an active, is it an active timber property if it was approved in, I believe, 2004? You know, these are questions I have that, you know, really, I haven't, I'm taking it one step at a time to try to figure out what direction it's going and then kind of going from there. Really, at this point, from what Kevin Whitlock has said and has made it clear to me, he's flat out said, the timber production should not be on your mind right now. Right now, this is getting this back to inability to grow. There's erosion, there is, I think Patrick addressed it, that there's runoff, a lot of topsoil that was taken off in that, in the roughly 25 acre area. And he said, really, for the first five years, you've got to get shreddings in here, like shredded bark or clippings. You need to get the soil back to where it is. And mainly, a lot of the work is the fire roads, the roads that were there before, the Larrangs really did a great job. They were excavators by trade, so they went back and got those roads maintained again. But they need to be, continued to scrape and get them back to, you know, especially after last winter, it was a horrible winter on that. We would come back up on the weekend, and again, you can't take a motorhome up on, up there. You've seen the road. So it's coming up with a 400 drive on the weekend to check out what's going on. Actually, it'd be 10, 20 trees down. One fell right in the front, right by the gate there, you could see it uprooted and, and came down. So really, a lot of that, that's, that's going on at this point.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks. Okay, back to my process question. Does it come back to a discussion, or do we allow further comment?
So you would close public comment and then bring it back to the commission for discussion?
Okay.
And then if the commission did have?
But I know he's eager to say something else, but does he have the option to do that or not? I'm asking from Kevin.
It's up to the commission whether you want to allow Mr. Gary Beadiehan to speak again during the public comment portion. And you can certainly, I guess, if you have any questions during the discussion portion that you want to direct towards Mr. Gary Beadiehan or the applicant, you can do that.
Well, I think that might be the best approach, is if we have any questions. But I know that one of the commissioners has a question for Patrick, so let's move to that. All right.
So you close the public?
I'll close public comment. We, Mr. Gary Beadiehan, we may ask you questions, bring you back up at this point, but I'm going to close public comment. But Jeff, you have a question for Patrick?
Do we know how long this property has been zoned, TPZ?
Commissioner Moss, I don't have the exact year, but I think it's been decades.
So it's, it's nothing, nothing new?
Do we have a date?
Yeah, PG&E, probably when the first, when the zoning law first came in, PG&E's zoned it TPZ.
Applied for it.
Well, that's 1993.
That's when it was sold.
Sold, so prior to 93, it was zoned TPZ?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, it's nothing, nothing new by any stretch of the imagination?
No, the designation has been existing for some time.
Thank you.
Okay, questions, comments for applicant or appellant?
Actually, for the staff, since I wasn't here, what was justification in changing the square footage of caretaker units to 1,200 square feet in 2014? And I think someone brought up the question, what's the difference between 3,000 and 1,200 as far as a TPZ?
I don't, I'm not sure I have an answer for that, except, you know, 1,200 square feet, that's, you know, maximum limitation on secondary dwelling units. So whether there was some correlation between that or not, I, I can't confirm or deny that.
We just want to touch on one thing with respect to the TPZ designation. This, what's before the commission right now, this is not a conversion of TPZ land or a removal of that land from the TPZ designation. The land is currently zoned TPZ and would be going forward barring some sort of request to the board or request to have it removed. The Timberland Productivity Act, which governs TPZ land, specifically allows certain compatible uses on that land. And those compatible uses, one of those is a caretaker resident. So this is, allowing the residence is not a deviation of the TPZ. That is, in fact, a compatible use, as has been designated by the state for TPZ land.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a, I have a question. You know, understand what you just said, but if this was residential forest land, would there be a question on the size of the house?
It'd be treated just like a single family residence, so no restrictions, as long as you met the development standards, that, things like that. The only other thing I would add, in the TPZ zoned land, you are allowed accessory structures, you know, with zoning clearance, and they're based on the size of the property over 4.6 acres. There's no limitation on size if it was an agricultural accessory structure.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I do have one question.
I'm going to have some comments.
I have one question that was asked, mentioned by Mr. Bearfield, was that he said that you could have multiple 1,200 square foot structures. And I, I'm not sure I saw that or heard that anywhere.
Yeah, that's correct. I have, Clayton has a code right in front of him, so I might have him read right from that.
Sure. So the applicable, applicable code section is 17.56.090, which allows for no more than one caretaker unit, except when the planning commission authorizes additional units and makes findings that document the necessity for the number of approved units. So one by default, the planning commission could approve additional 1,200 square foot units if it had findings to support it.
Thank you. Hey, Rich?
Basically, it sounds like we're talking about a permanent residence. And we keep hearing the word caretaker house. Is there a distinction?
There's not a distinction in the county code. Caretaker residence is a, can be a permanent residence.
Any other questions? I know you would like to make some comments.
Well, basically, it's, you know, this is one of those real awkward situations. And despite the fact, we're not making a decision on rollouts or that kind of thing today, just based on the location of this property and the size of it. And to me, it doesn't really stand out as a valuable TPZ property, though it is. You know, I think when you look around the county, you know, TPZ frequently is several thousand acres or a section of land or something, and intermingled with national forest land. And actually, actually, in most TPZ... And actually, actually, in most TPZ, there really isn't a need to have a caretaker house on it. They do need to be managed and requires, you know, the assistance of a forester and oftentimes heavy equipment and that kind of thing, but by and large, not all TPZ land needs to have a caretaker house. And the small size of 66 acres, myself, I really question whether there is a need for a caretaker house there. And so at any rate, I guess I'm thinking that maybe the variance is not required.
So do you believe that the initial approval of this some years back was a mistake?
Well, that was before we had the 1,200 square foot limit. And by approving this, actually, I think we are setting a precedent where, you know, other small TPZ properties are going to want to have big residential units on them. And, and they'll justify it, just like this one's being justified. And I recognize there's a lot of work, but I don't think that the Deerfields are really, by living their full time, are going to really be able to do the work that's necessary to bring this property up to, they're going to have to have a lot of contractors come in and help you out. And so at any rate, I guess I don't feel that, you know, I guess I don't feel that we should deny the appeal.
I do have a tax question on that, relates to if they made a decision to roll, to get out of the TPZ, there's a 10-year process to do that. But if I remember correctly, like under Williamson Act, it, it works the same way. And that if you do apply to get out, that there are some immediate impacts to your, your property tax value, that they can start to elevate that at that time. There's, it's kind of like a deterrent from getting, stepping out of it, is that even though you're going to have to still wait 10 years, you're going to be paying a higher value tax against your property. Is that, am I right or wrong on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's my understanding. As far as the immediate impact, I mean, the whole purpose of the 10 years is to spread out that impact. And so after 10 years, it will be back up at the Prop 13 value.
So it's a step up.
But it's, it's incrementally shifting them towards the Prop 13 valuation for the entire property.
Other comments or?
I guess, I have a couple of comments, if I could, please. Kind of looking at the, the list of items on the actual appeal itself. Obviously, one that, that would hit home to me would be an unfair tax advantage on the property taxed by the building of the residence. I believe the assessor's office has adequately addressed that. I don't think that, that alleged condition would exist. I think the assessor's office has taken care of that. I think he would be taxed fairly on, on both the, the TPZ property and the portion that is, is going to be used as the, the caretaker's home. The lack of night operations to justify the need for a 24-hour caretaker's unit on the property. Patrick has told us that security counts as, as a portion of that. And with its close proximity to the freeway and to other residential properties, I can see trespassing being, and, and theft and security all being a, a huge issue in, in fire prevention, as well as maintaining of equipment and other assets on the property. I understand that there is a, a 1,200 square foot max by code on, on the caretakers, and that's also why there's a variance process that we're going through now to, to try to allow for an exception to that rule on this property. I've asked the question, what difference does it make? And I haven't received any answer that tells me that it substantially makes any difference as to whether the house is 1,200 square feet or 12,000 square feet, except for a slight amount of timber that could be produced within the footprint of the larger home. With the required clear cut area around a home set by the Cal Fire and that, there's going to be an area that's out of production around any structure that goes on the property. And I can't see that making the home a little bit larger is going to substantially affect the, the timber production capability of, of the, the property. The, the property owner has gone to credentialed professionals to create a timber management plan. I haven't seen a lot of issues raised with the quality of that plan, other than possibly who has or has not seen it, but we don't have any definitive answers to those, those allegations as to who has or hasn't seen it. But it, it appears to meet the, the qualifications of a, the bona fide timber management plan. The county has a, has stated that they prefer to keep property in TPZ production and zoning as much as possible, and I think this, this allows that. There is no requirement that if this appeal was upheld, that the portion of the structure that exists today would need to be removed. So whatever impact there is by this structure to, to the TPZ area could remain in perpetuity whether or not it gets some walls stood up on it or not. In fact, it could get made worse by a separate 1,200 square foot structure being applied for elsewhere on the property without going to the expense of restoring the existing footprint to, to, to its natural condition. So as far as I can see, I don't see justification for, for supporting the appeal based on the items that are actually included in the, the actual appeal. I'd like to make some follow-up comments. As we heard from a couple of our planning commissioners today at the conference, well, they were talking about specific plans, and plans have to change or can change, you should allow for change as if it's required or substantiated. Just like to make a couple of comments here. Some of the material that actually Mr. Garabedian prevented in the back of the one with the map on, there's a letter there from Paul Thompson, that did say that the foundations and the grading were done with approved permits, and also that the foundation inspection was approved, you know, inspected and approved. So we've had other iss, other projects in front of us where, where we've been discussing taking out some building because stuff was built without any permits or anything else, but this looks like that stuff was put in. As far as the 1,200 square feet, it came in at, in 2012, and yet the foundations and everything were all approved in 2009. And echoing what, what Jeff just said, it, I think it'd be more detrimental to take out foundations and putting them back. Saying that, I, I think that if this were a, a new project, say nothing that had been done in the project up to now, maybe a little grading, but no foundation, I'd be thinking about this a little bit differently, including what Richard said about if it even needs a caretaker's site to begin with, you know, for that size of property. But we're not here to discuss that, we're here to discuss an existing issue. And so, and I don't think the size of the family really matters. I mean, it was an issue here, I guess, because it's trying to relate to the size of the dwelling, but we have homes built in Roseville that are 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, I think they're just a husband and wife living in them, so, you know, it doesn't, I don't, that's not material. So I think, considering what's gone, then they let this permit expire, it was a valid permit, one thing or another, it did expire. I think it, the zoning administrator did make the, make the right decision. I did have one little question, a little comment on, on page six of the staff report at the top, after he, after they were talking about everything on page five, where it says determined to be a minimum departure from the standard set forth in the zoning ordinance. I don't think tripling the size of, of a caretaker's unit is necessarily minimal, but under these circumstances, I think it's justified. So again, I don't see anything, I also, I do want to compliment both Mr. Garabedian and, and the applicant for their clear comments, but that's the way I'm kind of assessing it right now. If it was new, if it was a new project, it'd be different, I'd be on the other side, but I think there's nothing that, that I've been shown that we should uphold as the appeal. We should support the zoning administrator on this one.
Seems to me the major sticking point is the size of the structure. Everything else is kind of moot, but that seems to be where the biggest issue is right now. Sanders, did you want to comment?
I think the sticking point for me is, you know, I can, I can hear what you're saying, you know, if we're going to deal with approvals of, of big homes on small TPZ parcels, you know, ultimately, the question's got to be, you know, if it's a small TPZ parcel that needs a big home, then, you know, what are we doing here with the TPZ parcel? And why, why do we have that? So that's kind of underlying, though, I understand that's really not part of this. I will mention that in here, there are also in 2004, there was a request by Mr. Sanders and Brown to have a caretaker house, and that was turned down. So somewhere along the line, somebody else in the planning department approved minor use permit to build a, a big house. And then that didn't make it, so.
That's why I was making a comment, if this was a new project or a new concept on the property, I probably would rule the same way or do, think the same way that that 2004 decision was made, I will not know in the history of it, but so.
Sanders, did you have a comment?
Maybe for Richard. You know, one of the things, there are these small TPZs, and a PG&E or a large group is not in it. If it was not a TPZ, if it was forest residential, then we wouldn't have a forest plan, and this forest plan is pretty clear about what has to be done, and the conditions of approval are, the applicant has to report regularly, and if it, applicant is not adhering to the forest plan, then the use permit is removed. So in some ways, given where we are, wanting to maintain our forest, especially given the fire hazards, whatever, is it time to rethink what happens on the small TPZs and allowing residential uses that then at least would have people managing these properties where if you didn't have something there, it's probably not going to get managed?
I think there's no restriction on a person managing the forest on a residential property properly and hiring a forester to help.
But not with, there wouldn't be a forest plan. So under a zoning applicant, if it was forest, you would not have a forest management, you would just have a piece of property and no requirements. And at least with a TPZ, you're required to have a forest management plan and, and follow through on that plan. And I think that has some benefit for the management of that property.
Well, I guess there's a requirement that, that there'd be a report made every year.
There is.
But then what does the county do with that report?
My understanding is if they're not following the forest management plan, then the permit is removed and the house gets removed.
Yeah.
They have 45 days to, to deal with that, as the staff can probably tell me if I'm wrong.
I think once the house is built.
Understood.
It's built forever, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Howey, you are interpreting the condition correctly, but to your point, Mr. Johnson, it is probably unlikely that the house gets removed. If there were some deficiencies in that annual report, we would work with the applicant to address those and, and accelerate the management.
I should probably say something, since I'm the only one that hasn't, but.
You talked earlier in the meeting about your trip.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I, I think with the variance, it's pretty clear to me that all, all issues have been addressed. I think staff did a good job with addressing the concerns that, that were identified in the appeal. I, I haven't found anything that is still unclear or confusing. So to me, with, with the variance that we approve, I, I think is pretty clear to me. So I think that's all that I want.
Thank you, Nathan. I guess I can sort of find myself with Richard here, that if this was a new starting point, I would look at this very differently. I don't want to say it's grandfather sort of, but I know I'm sort of looking at it that way a little bit, yeah, it's sort of damaged, it's done, correct. But I guess at this point, since everybody's had their opportunity to make a comment here, I would ask that the, close public comment, Mr. Garabedian. So we're, we're now to the decision point, I guess, if I'm going to ask the commission.
I have one more question, if, if you're asking for it. Let me see, the follow-up on the management plan. Now, in this, this specific minor use permit, it's specified that you have an annual report. All these, there's several other parcels in the vicinity, are they all filed in these annual reports?
I, I guess I wouldn't know the answer to that question. That would be a typical condition of approval for TPZ, you know, to ensure that, that this management occurs, but we'd have to look at them individually to see when the improvements were approved and whether there were any, you know, hooks or, or connections to, to incorporate and implement the plan.
I guess I'm wondering, because normally, Cal Fire does require a harvest plan. And so I just, I guess I'm wondering what the counties roll in. I mean, this might be a unique situation here, that's what I'm wondering. Or if you do follow through every year with all the TPZ properties?
I, you know, I, I'm, I'm learning a bit about TPZ, I mean, in terms of, you know, the, the follow-through and such. Sorry, I kind of lost my train.
Yeah, would you, I would just say, I mean, there, we do receive monitoring reports, I don't have any numbers on, you know, what we receive per year. We receive annual reports on a number of different types of projects, whether it's, you know, subdivisions with landscaping requirements and things like that. But, but, you know, if these are other TPZ properties that were approved through this process, and there's a requirement for those annual reports, you know, there, there needs to be modern, monitoring. I just don't have any numbers on, you know, what we see every year, you know, and, and the results of those.
So that's, that's a standard provision in the minor use permit.
It should be.
Any other questions, comments, or I would ask, Mr. Garabedian, I have closed the public comment, so I'm just going to ask if the commission wants to take any action on this, and if so, to test it with a, with a motion.
Barring nobody else jumping up here, chairman's permission, I would make a motion that we deny the appeal by the Plaster Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. We find the project, do we need to do these in separate?
Hearing a yes.
Okay, then I would make the, the first motion, that we deny the appeal by the Plaster Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork.
Motion, I'm looking, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, roll call, Sue.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we find the project categorically exempt from SEQA Section 15303, the new construction of small structures.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Sue?
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No. Oh, yes, I mean, yes, on that. Have to change my.
Okay. Yes, from Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further...
I would further move that we uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the minor use permit and variance PLN 17 dash 00331, supported by the findings in the staff report.
Second that. Okay. Nathan, second. Sue?
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of this item. Now, I would ask county council, can this be appealed to the board of supervisors? I'm seeing the planning director shaking. He said yes, is that correct? Okay, so it can be appealed within, uh, uh, let's see, 10 days you've got, and it's $602 to appeal it to the board. Anything else I need to say? Nope, okay. Thank you, everybody, on this one. Appreciate, uh, your patience as we work through this. Um, I would ask the commission if they want to take two minutes before we go to our 10:30 item. Two minutes? Okay. Uh, I mean, it's been a long, uh, you know, period of time, but, uh, how about just really quickly, if we could take a quick fast break, and then we'll get back to our schedule, so. Um, let's, uh, get ready for our 10:30 item at almost 12:30.
Thank you for patiently waiting.
Yes, thank you, Dan. Appreciate you, uh, sitting through all of that. Everybody can get into place, we'll get started. Okay. Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, Nader, and Commissioners. For the record, Daniel Dottay, Deputy Director with Engineering and Surveying. And I'm happy to be able to give you an introduction to our division. Uh, I have with me here our county surveyor, Lesley Amesbury, so I may turn to her for expertise if you give me survey questions that are too difficult for me to answer. Um, Sierra Gilmar, Associate Civil Engineer, also with us here. And we had Eric Griffin with us earlier. He may have gone back to the office, but he's an Assistant Engineer with our operation. So, I have a slideshow here, ready to go through. If you have any questions, feel for, there's Eric, Assistant Engineer, Eric. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me as we go through the slideshow. So, what is ESD? So, we are one of the three divisions under the CDRA permit umbrella. And we've listed, uh, the three divisions from left to right, planning, PLN, ESD, we are in the middle, building, BLDG is far right. And that's because that's the way the permits progress. So, permits would start off in the planning division and receive their entitlements and SEQA clearance. Uh, after they get cleared by planning, they would come into our shop to get plans for horizontal infrastructure development, and through Leslie's shop to do, um, divisions of real estate. And then af- after those improvements are constructed, they would go into the building division to get permits to go vertical. So, who is ESD? So, we have obviously engineers and surveyors that's in our name. We've got fif- 13 engineers on our staff. We have five surveyors. We have six technicians, and then we have one support staff. Um, our technicians are called engineering technicians, and they're very similar to the building department technicians who are called building inspectors. Our technicians would review the horizontal improvements, and the building inspectors would review the vertical improvements.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you outsource any of, any functions within your department?
Right now, we are not, but we have contracts in place if we have to. And in the past, we have. So, about 10 or 12 years ago, when it was very busy development, we did outsource some, uh, plan reviews and, um, construction inspection as well. And we're anticipating needing to do that again this year, particularly with Plaster Vineyards and Bigford Ranch presumably coming online next spring. Uh, we are already working on contracts. Leslie and I have contracts in place for the plan and map review, and then I'm working right now with staff on contracts for construction inspection.
Thank you.
So, a little known fact, uh, as of about a year ago, we also oversee the front and counter services, too. So, up there, we have two senior community development technicians, seven, uh, either assistant or associate technicians, and then two administrative clerks. So, what do we do? So, as I mentioned, planning, uh, is the lead for the entitlements, and engineering and surveying staff would help them as technical experts on those projects. You've seen them before in commission, like Ms. Gilmore sitting here. Um, we review, we are lead for the civil site improvements when the projects begin to move into the horizontal development stage. Uh, we do the survey mapping for the land divisions, that parcels those out into smaller lots. And then we do other stuff as well, and I'll get into that in a minute. So, on the entitlement side, uh, planning division is the lead, and engineering surveying would assist with the technical issues, uh, roads, grading, drainage, sewer systems, et cetera. We, um, contribute toward developing those project conditions of approval as they come before your commission to be approved. Uh, we would have, uh, uh, the say in developing those relative to our areas of purview. And then we also participate in policy updates. So, Crystal Jacobson, when she took the Tahoe Basin area plan forward last fall, I believe, we had a role in that as well, again, relative to the engineering components of that, uh, area plan update. This slide just shows a little bit of how we get involved in the planning process. So, on the lower right-hand side, we have a plan area for Plaster Vineyards there, and you can see Roseville developments as well. So, we would also review their plans. Likewise, they would review ours for impacts that might be cumulative. On the upper right-hand side, we have, uh, an example of our checklist we use, and it says ESD afterwards. So, those would be formatted with those criteria relative to our areas of review. Environmental Health would have their own. Our sewer group, if it was a sewer project, would have involvement as well. Top left-hand side is a tentative map that would be approved by your commission if it, so it got approved, and that would be the basis for, um, our county surveyor to work with her staff on developing the final map in the land, ultimate land division. And then lower left-hand corner is just the copies of the EIRs we're working with, which you gentlemen see as well. Those very thick documents that we have to turn to fairly often. So, the site improvements, the horizontal infrastructure, which supports the vertical development. This is when the permitees come into our shop, and we are the lead. So, this is an example of a commercial development. Um, a little bit hard to see on this screen, probably a little more visible over there, but this is the Americas Tire, right over here off of Willow Creek Drive, about five or six years ago, I believe. So, our involvement here would be with the utilities being constructed in the county public road on the left-hand side there. We would have involved, involvement with the, um, curb cut in the driveway entrance, the sidewalks, then the onsite paving. The building department would have purview over the building itself, and generally a five to 10-foot footprint around that building. So, there is a little bit of overlap in our, in our areas of expertise. So, we also get involved in commercial developments where there may not be an active building permit. So, this is the Plaza on Highway 49, and, uh, we were involved with the original development. They went in afterward and constructed all the buildings. And then later on, they realized they needed a better, um, turning movements for their trucks. I think it was related to Best Buy. They have some bigger trucks they had to get back in there. So, they wanted to retool their entryway, um, right off of Holbert here. So, we would get involved in that. We'd issue a permit. And part of that work, as you can see, is assuring the new configuration meets accessibility requirements. Uh, so they retooled a lot of their sidewalks. And over here, in this area here, you can see that gauge, that's one of our staff's gauges called the smart level. And we would use that to check the slopes to make sure they're in compliance with ADA and accessibility standards. This is an example, uh, residential subdivision down in Granite Bay, currently under construction right now. Um, I think it actually may have gone to the board recently for acceptance as complete last month. This is the, uh, Rolling Green subdivision, nine lots in Granite Bay. Uh, again, we would be involved in the construction of that road, the utilities that serve that, uh, project, and then the frontage improvements, as you see up here. Again, the handicap accessibility features that go along Eureka Road, the public way. Uh, sidewalk eventually will be brought down to connect in continuity with other sidewalk in the area. And we also get involved in commercial residential projects, and your commission probably recognizes this one. In fact, we are currently in this building right now. Uh, this is the Timberline project. This is when they're paving, and so we would have staff out there for the paving operations as well. Uh, and this one has both a commercial and a residential component. So, they have a use permit, and they have a subdivision tentative map. And I believe on the left-hand side of the photo is the commercial, eventually will be commercial medical facilities, I believe. And on the right is going to be the residential component. And another little known fact is that we don't just build stuff. You know, engineers, we like to pave and build, and, uh, we actually get involved in restoration projects. So, uh, this project was the American River Headwaters Restoration Project. It was a grading permit we issued for this project, uh, several years ago. It's a multi-year project where, um, up east of French Meadows, up in the American River Headwaters, uh, to the Middle Fork, American River, uh, they're removing old logging roads, and they're restoring them back to natural condition. And as part of that, you can see the old culverts that got removed from the drainageways, and they're going to restore those drainageways into the natural streambed environment. So, we issue permits for that type of work as well.
About wetlands?
Pardon me?
Do you get involved in wetland, uh, restoration?
We, we, on the periphery, yes. So, we would, we're, we're, that's not our expertise, but for instance, we have had some wetlands projects come in where they're creating mitigation banks. And most important to us would be the soil movement and earthwork associated with that, and the drainage impacts. Not necessarily drainage onsite, but possible offsite impacts. So, usually, wetlands restoration, they like to hold the water onsite to create the vernal pools, and we wouldn't get too involved in that, but we would look at the boundary conditions to make sure there are not changing drainage patterns to offsite properties who are not a part of that project.
All right.
The survey mapping functions, uh, these, um, occur under Ms. Amesbury's charge. Uh, final maps, parcel maps, records of survey, legal descriptions. We get involved in quite a lot of that, including for county, um, properties. And, uh, survey monument preservation, which I'll speak to briefly as well in a minute. So, here's an example of a final map, which I believe also got approved recently by the board, Palisades up in Tahoe. Um, so, this final map was created based on the tentative map, and this is the final document that creates the parcels that are sold off. These improvements are constructed, I believe, as well. I believe we accepted them as complete, So, monument preservation, um, this is becoming near and dear to our heart lately because California law has recently put more responsibility on local oversight, oversight agencies to monitor this. So, if we have active projects, we have an obligation, the state looks towards us, another unfunded mandate, the state looks towards us to assure monuments are preserved. And we have to work with, uh, the contractors and developers that if we have reason to believe that they will be taken out, that they get tied out. And if they do get taken out, we have a responsibility to assure that they're put back in place in the correct locations and new records of surveys filed for those. So, uh, that's been a little bit of a challenge with us because, uh, in the past, we haven't had an, as much of an active role lately we have. So, we have been working with applicants to educate them more on this, uh, state law that, that applies to them as well. But we are now in the charge of having to, um, more actively enforce that role.
That monument's on this, this photo here, is it just on a steel pole there?
That, that's a rebar, and then on top is a s-
Usually, they're embedded in like a concrete thing and everything else.
Uh, ye- yes, correct. Oftentimes, we do so.
That's where I live, in the city.
If, if this were, uh, new developments, urban developments, if this were in a road, we would have them put in what's called a monument box. And you're absolutely correct. It's a s- a, a structure, um, traffic rated structure built into the road to provide ultimate protection. For rural properties, um, if you're having a surveyor do a record of survey to find your boundary, oftentimes, we see the rebar, and then they'll put this cap on the top, which has a surveyor's stamp on there, uh, to designate that as, in this case, most likely a property corner.
Okay. Temporary monuments?
Temporary monuments.
Temporary as in?
They, they move?
Usually, they're, they're not really considered temporary. If they were set, and if they were taken out for, uh, like if there was a construction car that followed, uh, the owner, would have the contractor hire a surveyor. So, um, once they're set by a surveyor, there should be a record of that setting of the monument. Um, we really don't consider, uh, a survey monument as being temporary. Sometimes, states are placed, um, like sometimes we put up a building, uh, stake a foundation, things like that. The survey monuments marking property crimes are generally not considered.
Correct. So, the state law would not apply to those. So, if they have a temporary tie-out, and that gets- and that gets removed during construction, we don't have heartburn about it. Obviously, the applicant developer would, they have to resurvey them and set those monuments. But what we're concerned about is the actual monument that set property corners to final monuments that go onto record. Okay, and other stuff. So other items that Engineering and Surveying gets involved in as well, we do encroachments for large utility projects, grading permits, which I had already mentioned briefly, grading and drainage complaints, we work with code enforcement on those. We do water quality, street naming and dressing, and we also do SMARA, which I will explain that in a minute as well. A few pictures of some examples here. So a large utility encroachment, this project was the Applegate Regional Sewer. There was a fair amount of new sewer trunkline put within county maintained roads, and we had involvement in overseeing that, mostly for road restoration, to make sure the pipe goes in properly, the road is restored and compacted properly so that it isn't compromised in the future. Grading permits, this one is down in Granite Bay. This one actually started off as a violation, and you can see why. It's very steep, not compacted, and it, the slopes went into the drip lines of the oaks. So we worked with the applicant to get a grading permit, a remedy grading permit for this project, which he did, and then he pulled that slope back, stabilized it, and then mitigated for the tree impacts. We also deal with grading and drainage complaints. This one is up in the North Auburn area, still ongoing at this point. And for illustration here, you can see where we have not just water discharge offsite, where quantities and direction didn't occur before, but you can see a lot of sediment in the discharge. That's a violation of the county's permit under the State Water Quality Board. And then this one is over in the Elverda area, southwest part of the county, and we get involved in these as well, because this one was a, this is a county maintained road where a culvert was blocked, and it now results in occasional flooding of the county maintained road. Then I mentioned water quality as well. So we got involved both with the West Placer Design Manual in April 2016, and on the right there, you'll see the East Placer Design Manual in May 2017. So our staff assisted with those as well. And addressing, so we assign addressings that addresses at building permits and electrical permits, and on large subdivisions, we would allocate those addresses ahead of time. If it's not a large subdivision, we try to leave gaps so we can have a uniform addressing system, very important. And the reason why it's very important is because emergency services have to rely on that. So there's continuity to our addressing system. We work on a grid system, for instance, odd on one side, even on the other, continuity of the dresses. So they would descend or ascend in a logical pattern where you would expect it. So during emergency, if either EMS is there, or people are trying to escape, and you're flustered and you're not thinking clearly, you want continuity and clarity in trying to find where you're going to and from. And then the last one, SMARA, Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. We administer this as well for Placer County. There are 10 active above-ground mines in Placer. This is an example in Meadow Vista, and they're mining aggregate here, and you can see the existing high wall, and this has been mined for quite some time, I believe 40, 50 years perhaps. They have a reclamation plan on file, they have a bond on file with us, so we are guaranteed that they will restore the site when they're done. That is correct. They have to make an application to modify their use permit, and then they would have to revise their reclamation plan to include the new areas, and then there would be a new security required too if they're expanding their operation.
Is that a difficult process to go through if they wanted to expand?
I have not been through one yet. I suspect it takes some time, largely because there's a state component involved. And then if the mines are on federal property in the forest, then you have the Forest Service as well. So we have one right now, we, several, quite frankly, that are out of compliance on forest property, and we're working with the Forest Service, trying to get them into compliance. And we have had meetings with us and State Department of Conservation and the Forest Service, and it's been difficult to get direction for the applicants because there are so many competing interests in regulations. The Water Board wants certain plan of operations first. The Forest Service says they need water discharge requirements before the plan of operation. They need the rec plan, which is our part of the program. Putting that out timing-wise can be very difficult. What we find now is that the smaller mining operations have difficulty meeting regulations nowadays. The larger operators who are more averse in this field do a better job.
Reason I ask that, I'm aware of one that is talking about coming in for an application to expand their operation that's local, not in a forest.
Okay.
To look forward.
Yes. Which project is that?
Pardon?
Which project? Do you mind if I ask?
Robinson Newcastle--
Okay.
--hit that they have, they would like to expand it towards Plazano.
I've talked to Paul about that, yes. Yes. So I know he's had those discussions with you and George, I believe.
Right.
Yeah. So last slide here, also SMARA, but this one's kind of interesting. So SMARA doesn't necessarily mean above-ground operations. So that's generally what it covers, but this is one of the projects we have up in Forsell. This is an underground mine, a gold mine. They trigger SMARA because they have holding pits on the outside of the mine that exceed the requirements for SMARA coverage. They've disturbed more than an acre, and they're processing enough material that they would trigger the need for a land reclamation plan and a bond. And so we also have, we would get involved in this type of project for SMARA as well. And over here, in case anybody's wondering, this is the remnants of the Westfield Fire, 2008 went through there.
You also monitor the BMPs for all these projects, the construction and all that, and make sure that precautions are in place while the construction's going on?
Yes, Commissioner Moss, that is a big part of our job. That is something that the state looks towards us under our permit, under our municipal permit, to assure that those are being met. And right now, I've got staff, in fact, we had a meeting on one this morning, where he is very proactive on making sure that the BMPs are put in place before the winter. Ms. Gilmore recently, I think two or three weeks ago, sent out our cover letters to all of our grading permits, active permits at this time, to remind them of the need to put BMPs in place, generally before October 15th. So yes, we're getting near that time of the season where they need to start buttoning up. That's it. That was my last slide, so I'd be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
Any questions for Dan?
Yeah, what's the BMP?
That's for a runoff.
Yeah, best management practices, often associated with--
It was his question, not mine.
No, no, that was his question.
I knew what it was, but I just wanted to ask him for him. He was embarrassed to ask--
So they have BMPs beyond just water quality, right? BMPs, terminology shows up in other areas as well, but common water quality.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. That was very helpful information.
Thank you for your time.
Unless there's anything else, I guess our meeting is done. Something you'd like to say, go ahead.
Actually, this is for planning staff, sorry about that. But again, going to this conference, talking about specific plans, and noticing in the list of projects coming up, we have a number of these requests to convert religious sites into other uses, and I'm wondering if it'd be appropriate for the commission to discuss that. One, if they are converting, do they need to do it now, or do they wait till the subdivision is built out because of the changes in cost between religious site and a other site? And then another question is, at least in the staff reports, what benefit is going to be returned to that new community with removal of that from a religious site to another use? You know, it's kind of like you have a commitment that was made some years ago on the specific plan of these benefits, and just want to make sure that there is a return benefit if we're going to be modifying the zone on that. So I'm just wondering if that's worthwhile for the commission to discuss at some point in time.
I think, you know, we hit on this at the last meeting. It was a very sensitive issue, that these can easily be flipped into residential once they, when they were originally planned for the opportunity for a religious structure. I think Rich was kind of leading that discussion. So I think it would be helpful. I think we got some feedback from the staff that they were going to look at that issue. So we'd love, I think it would be helpful for the commission to get an update on what that meant by what they were going to do with that.
So this is, this was the last hearing, I believe, that I was able to watch remotely, and I was engaged, I did hear that entire conversation. So the religious sites is unique to Placer Vineyard's specific plan.
Right.
So that's the only specific plan in the county where, where at the time it was originally approved, it was decided that there would be designated religious sites throughout the plan. So as these, you know, we've had the discussion, and as you mentioned from the APA Conference, you know, specific plans, the nature of a general specific plan is over time, they change. People come in to modify them, they ask for amendments. You've seen that, your commission has seen that. We have other properties within Placer Vineyards that are going to be asking for amendments. I know Property 1A, which is the most eastern property. So, but with the specific plan, there's also other approvals that happen within the specific plan, such as administrative approvals, and some of those changes and switching of land uses can happen under the purview of that plan. So, you know, I guess, can we bring back a discussion item on the religious sites in Placer Vineyards? I guess we would have to probably talk to council offline. Do we do that as a separate item, just to talk about religious issues, or with any upcoming specific plan amendments, if that is actually going to be part of another amendment, you know, do we do that? So it sounds like the commission is interested in hearing this. Probably it's just a matter of what, you know, how we want to present that and discuss that.
Well, I would ask you to come back and tell us what your recommendation would be to help, if this is going to be an issue that's going to be addressed under an amendment at some point in the future, and what that amendment's going to look like.
Right. And I don't, and I can't say whether or not there's actually a proposal to remove any other sites right now, but you know, that is something that could come up. I remember the big discussion was, you know, they're removing them, but at the same time, you know, religious sites can be located in, you know, it's allowed use in any zone district, whether it's a use permit or some other process, but you could actually, you know, put those uses in any land use district. But unique to Placer Vineyards, they actually specified specific parcels of specific acreages for those uses, not really knowing, you know, what the needs of a religious institution may or may not be at the time they do come in.
Well, I think the issue is that obviously the higher return is with housing, not with churches, and the church has to go out and buy a site because it wasn't designated specifically for that, that it's going to cost them a whole lot more money.
Yeah, we're happy to bring something back.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if whoever made that comment that you're working on it could come back with what maybe a proposed amendment to that would be helpful for us. Because I think you can see there's some sensitivity here, how that's being managed for it.
There was a robust discussion, as I remember. So yes, I think we could definitely have further discussions.
There was, and it's kind of like, maybe this is a one-off, but I just noticed in your list of projects, it comes up again. So that's kind of why I had some questions. I think Richard brought up some good points, and it's just worthwhile to have a discussion of policy, which way we can go as a commission.
Yep.
And I think it's also important to let applicants come in, which way the planning commission is going, kind of in advance of being here, and then making a recommendation that may not have been the staff's.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Okay.